We're getting ready to go live. Okay, thanks. I thought they had fixed that. Obviously, they did. Mr. Chairman?
All right. All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Monday, April the 5th, public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we could, please stand for the pledge, and then Commissioner Titchell will lead us into the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Javale, with me for a word's prayer, please. Precious and loving heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for the day that you've given us and for the Easter season that you gave us, Lord, and for your Son that you gave us to save us from our sins. And, Lord, we just continue to thank you for all that you do for us each and every day. We also pray for those that are still battling COVID, Lord, and we ask that you just reach out and heal their bodies and give us an answer to this, Lord. We just asked your guidance and direction there. Lord, we would ask that you be with us today as we go through this meeting and guide us and direct us, and that the decisions we make here today for our county, Lord, would be pleasing to you. And, Lord, we just continue to thank you and glorify you, and we do all this in your Son's name. Amen.
Pleased to see you. Thank you. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Easter. And first item on the agenda, or I guess we need to approve the agenda. So, Mr. Knoll, are there any additions or corrections to the public meeting agenda?
No, sir, there are none.
Hearing none, we have motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
We have motion, we have second.
Second.
We have motion, a second agenda approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second minutes are approved by mutual consent. First item on the agenda is an update for COVID-19 for Garrett County. Bob Stevens is actually unable to join us tonight, so I believe, Mr. Knoll, you'll step in for him, correct?
Yes, sir, I will. So Bob had left a brief report. So the state numbers are trending up, are trending up slightly. But the county has not seen, not have, not, has not seen an increase. Our positivity rate was 4.11%, and the state's positivity rate is 5.79%. 29.5% of the Garrett County population have been vaccinated, so we're going pretty good there. Vaccines were currently in Phase 2. Per the governor's orders, Phase 2C will begin in, on next Tuesday, the 13th. And that's all mailers 55 and older, and all essential workers in critical industries. Phase 3 then will begin on Tuesday, April 27th, and that will be open to all mailers 16 and older. So by the end of April, everybody that wants, once the vaccine should be able to schedule one. Garrett County, we're still receiving 300 doses a week, plus 300 doses for the second shot. So we have yet to see an increase of vaccine doses, and we haven't seen, nor how do we know when that, we'll start seeing additional doses from Johnson &amp; Johnson. The Health Department is accepting appointments. You can go to the Health Department website or call the Health Department to get on the list, and they are scheduling off the list. Also, Walgreens, Walmart, and CVS all have vaccines and are giving vaccinations. We do not know how many doses they, those organizations receive. They are given directly through the federal government, and we don't have that, we don't know what they have. The mass vaccination sites for Western Maryland is in Hagerstown at the prime outlets. At the mass vaccination sites, it's open to all mailers 16 and older. So there's no restrictions at the mass vaccination sites. You do have to pre-register, and you can go online to register or call and choose what you want. And again, although the pre-registration is open to all mailers, the priority is on Phase 1 and 2 eligibility. The Hagerstown site had 250 doses that had been allocated to Garrett County residents. Last week, there was only seven doses given out to Garrett County residents in Hagerstown. So the Health Department has requested the state that they consider reallocating those doses to Garrett County, so we can, we'll be able to administer that, those doses here in the county. And at this point, it's kind of a quickly changing environment, but as more doses come on, we'll be able to get more people vaccinated. So that's my, that's the report from the Health Department.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Just in a way of clarification, the 300 doses that Garrett County gets goes to the Health Department?
That's correct.
The others, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, Mount Laurel, are all in addition to the three?
Correct. Right, yes, I'm, yeah, and I can't tell you how many they receive, but it's an addition.
All right.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Knoll. All right. The next item on the agenda, we have a couple of proclamations to present. The first one is for National Library Week, and we are joined today by the Director of the Ruth and Lo Library System, Tom Sves, that we will present this proclamation for National Library Week, April 4th through the 10th, 2021. Whereas National Library Week is an observance by the American Library Association and libraries across the country each April and is celebrating its 63rd anniversary with the 2021 theme "Welcome to Your Library." Whereas Garrett County is home to Ruth and Lo Library of Garrett County with five locations that have long served the county, is trusted and treasured resource with library workers who provide programs and services to improve our communities on a daily basis. And whereas Garrett County Library Cards are held by more than 18,000 individuals who have, despite COVID-19, borrowed more than 200,000 library items in the past year. Whereas libraries support democracy and effect social change through commitment to providing open and equitable access to information for all library users, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, and sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, and connecting users across disparate groups. And whereas libraries and librarians look beyond their traditional roles and provide opportunities to connect closely with patrons' needs, transforming lives through innovative educational resources and programs and materials that help develop new lifelong passions. Whereas libraries promote and educate citizens in critical concepts in society such as privacy and information literacy. Now therefore, we, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of April 4th through 10th, 2021, as National Library Week in Garrett County, and urge citizens to recognize the value and significant contributions libraries make to our community. And witness whereof, we, the Board of County Commissioners, have hereunto set our hand and caused the official seal of Garrett County, Maryland to be affixed, signed by Commissioners Heimbold, Titchell, and myself. Mr. Sves, thank you very much for all that you guys do, and would you like to say anything?
I just wanted to say thank you all very much for all your support.
Thank you very much.
Hey, I just want to tell you, you and your staff do a great job over there. The most recent thing is my wife got me a new Kindle, and being able to download books from the library to the Kindle, to the Kindle is, it's really neat. I mean, that's.
Yeah, we've got that Hoopla that a lot of folks are using these days. That's been real popular. Books, you know, audiobooks, music, TV shows, you know, all sorts of things you can have.
Yeah. It's a great library system, yes.
Yeah, great. All right, and we also have proclamation for Autism Awareness Month, April 2021. Whereas autism spectrum disorder is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States affecting 1 in 54 children, is an urgent public health crisis that demands a national response. And whereas Autism FYI Organization, an organization dedicated to promoting a safe environment, employment opportunities, and independence of those on the autism spectrum, provides a safety program offering easily identifiable products for quick identification by emergency personnel, a hotline for accessing emergency contacts and medical information and training. Training is also offered for first responders, childcare providers, transportation models, hair salons, restaurant staff, school resource officers, correctional officers, and medical staff is available in person and online through its Autism Online Course Marketplace. Whereas Autism FYI holds an annual camp for children and young adults with autism to help teach them life skills. Autism FYI provides a national membership program along with immediate recognition increases safety program that works on the premise that immediate recognition of one's disability and need for special consideration helps first responders act appropriately in an emergency. And whereas Garrett County is honored to take part in the observance of Autism Awareness Month and to hope that it will lead to a better understanding of the disorder. And whereas in light of the growing impact of ASD and the need for greater awareness of the disorder, Garrett County will observe a Wear Blue Campaign on April 20th, 2021, by asking our citizens to participate by wearing blue on that day. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Autism Awareness Month, and do commend this observance to all citizens. We call upon government officials, businesses, communities, healthcare professionals, educators, volunteers, and all people of the county to continue our strong commitment to advancing awareness of and finding a cure for autism spectrum disorders, signed by Commissioner Heimbold, Titchell, and myself. So two very important proclamations there. Next item on the agenda, we have some appointments. Mr. Knoll, what do you have for us?
Yes, sir. These are appointments to the Garrett County Adult Guardianship Review Board. These are ratifications. These were submitted by the Department of United Services, Garrett County Department of Social Services. We have Dr. Stuart Callis, Thomas Dabney, Virginia Gearheart, Scott Hollingsworth, Tamara Canfield, Donna Faust, and Dr. Carl Swan for consideration.
And all those people are willing to serve?
Yes, sir, and this is for a three-year term.
Any questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the recommended slate?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, we actually have the official adoption of the Salary Study Commission. At our last meeting, we approved the contents of that particular ordinance because it was slightly different than the recommendation. We had to redraft the ordinance. So this is just formalizing what we voted on at the last meeting, which was essentially to accept the recommendations of the Salary Commission, with one exception, which was the request to increase the chairman pay for the Board of Education by an additional $500, I believe. So that, that was rejected. The rest of it was accepted. Any questions or further comments on the Salary Study Commission? Once again, I'd like to thank all of the individuals that participated and served on that committee. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion to approve and finalize the ordinance for the Salary Study Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we have a bid. Mr. Knoll, what do you have for us?
Oh, yes, sir. This is a bid for liquid asphalt for the Garrett County Roads Department. We received two bids, one from Russell Standard Corporation in the amount of $1.91.6 cents per gallon, and the second one was from Specialty Ambulations at $2.43 cents. $2.043 per gallon. So after reviewing the bids for compliance, the Roads Department and Garrett County Purchasing recommends awarding the bid to Russell Standard Corporation for $1.91.6 per gallon.
All right. Questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept bid, accept Russell Standard Corporation's bid for bid number 21-03181?
Make a motion to accept that bid.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, in a sense, another bid. I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Finance, Scott Weeks, to present this in relation to the Garrett County Employee Healthcare Plan. So, Mr. Weeks?
Thank you. I'm here to make a recommendation on behalf of the Garrett County Employees Healthcare Plan, which is made up of three entities: Garrett County Commissioners, the Garrett County Board of Education, and Garrett College. We went out to bid for our, our medical services, or actually our healthcare services, which made up of medical, prescription drugs, dental, and vision. We had five vendors respond on the medical. We had seven vendors respond on the prescription drug, and several on dental and vision. We are recommending to move forward with CareFirst Blue Cross Blue Shield, which provides stronger network discounts, a reduction in admin fees, and they are throwing in some additional increased wellness credits, some implementation credits, and some performance guarantees on implementation and ongoing service. Overall, we feel that the network is a stronger network than our current UMR. We have had CareFirst in the past. Prior to 2015, we were with CareFirst Blue Cross Blue Shield. So overall, there was a substantial savings with CareFirst, and that is our recommendation. Any questions I can answer?
So this, this is for the healthcare piece, but not the prescription?
Yes, yeah. Good, good point, yeah. Yeah, we are recommending we, we keep our CDS Caremark for our prescription drugs, dental and vision, also the current vendors that we're with, and we're just recommending that we switch on the medical side.
Any other questions for Mr. Weeks? And the whole coalition worked on this together, and everybody's in agreement.
Absolutely, and I forgot to mention our third-party healthcare advisors, CBIZ, they did the RFP, the analysis, went through the whole bid process on our behalf, and they did an excellent job.
Excellent. Any other questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to accept Blue Cross, what is it?
CareFirst.
CareFirst, yeah, CareFirst for the Garrett County Employee Healthcare Plan.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we are actually going to close the public meeting and move into a public hearing. The public hearing is in regard to amendments to the Garrett County Sewer and Water Master Plan. I'm going to turn this over in just a second to Bobby Witt from the Department of Utilities. Before I do that, can I get a motion to close the public meeting and open a public hearing?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. So the public meeting is now closed. We are now in an open public hearing. Mr. Witt, what do you have for us?
So this is a variety of water and sewer service areas, adjustments. The first we're going to talk about is the Paradise Heights Road Water Service Area Expansion.
Give me one second, Mr. Witt, please. I'll get this up for you.
All right.
Share my screen. My computer locked up here, so.
Long second.
Yep, that's all right.
Bobby, you're doing a great job.
Okay, so why is that dial up here? Hold on, I'm sharing screen. You are sharing screen.
While we are waiting on that, the public comment period for the amendments to the Water and Sewer Master Plan is how long? Two weeks?
Yes, till our next meeting.
Till our next meeting, so a two-week timeframe. So if anyone would like to send comments in regard to the proposed amendments, you can send it to gccomments@garretcounty.org. So that is G-C-C-O-M-M-E-N-T-S@garretcounty.org, and it'll be open from now until our next meeting, which I believe is the 18th. Mr. Witt, if you want to go ahead and proceed, we'll do it without the visual.
Okay. All right, so the Paradise Heights Road Water Service Area Expansion will be an expansion to the Deep Creek Lake Water System, which was merged a couple of years ago to combine McHenry and Theraville Systems. This extension will encompass from the intersection of Glendale Road to the intersection of Cliff Road, which is about four tenths of a mile. And it'll add 38 properties to the district. The second one is Puzel Road Sewer Service Area Expansion, and that'll be an expansion to the existing Deep Creek Lake Sewer System. And that'll include a total of four parcels in behind the Garrettland Apartments behind Foodland Fresh. And that'll utilize the line that goes to serve the airport. And there's plenty of capacity in that line. The third service area is the Maple Street Sewer Service Area Expansion, and this will be an expansion to the Friendsville Sewer System, and it'll provide sewer service to parcel 37 for commercial development in town. The next service area expansion is 398 Fairview Church Road. This is a property that's lost its well water. They front the line, and they would like to connect to our system. And again, that is in the Gorman Water System. The fifth system expansion is 2661 Glendale Road for Sewer Service. And that will be in the Deep Creek Lake Sewer System as well. This is a property that fronts the line, but is not currently in the area, but would like to connect for public sewer. Number six, Mountainside Lots 118 and 86 are being, are asking to be added to the Deep Creek Lake Sewer System. These will be new homes, and they would like, there is a line for them to connect and enough capacity for these two lots. Number seven is 1019 Madison Street. This is a water service expansion to the Mountain Lake Park Water System. They're willing to extend the line at their expense and connect. This is another bad well. And they desire public water. The last area I want to talk about is the creation of a new Rosedale Sewer Service Area. It will be served by the transmission line that will go from the existing Trout Run wastewater treatment plant to the new Oakland Treatment Plant when it's constructed. This area has a number of failing septic systems, and we need to create a service area in order for us to legally serve them, sewer service. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Witt?
Bobby, we're kind of using the term "system" and "district" interchange between here and there.
Yes.
So we're really talking about changes to the district in most cases.
The Water and Sewer Master Plan, research.
To the district. Thank you.
And most of the property, this is being driven by requests from property owners in these areas to?
The vast majority of these are, yes.
Any, we are in a, in a public hearing. Is there any public comment or questions about the proposed amendments to the Water and Sewer Master Plan?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
Because we didn't have the PowerPoint, this information is available on the website, or you can call the office, and we can get it to you, so.
Okay. So for the viewers at home, you can check this information out on our website, or you can call in and request a PowerPoint. Once again, any comments can be made to gccomments@garretcounty.org. And if there are no other questions or comments?
How long? They have two weeks.
They have two weeks. The comment period will be for two weeks.
That's correct.
If there are no other questions or comments, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting.
So moved. Thank you, Bob.
All right. Thank you, Bobby. So that actually brings us to the conclusion of the public meeting agenda. Do you have just a couple of announcements to make? And then want to welcome Dr. Rich Midcap from Garrett College here, who in just a second will give their budget presentation for Garrett College for fiscal year '22. We did get some questions about the American Recovery Act funding. I want to address that just briefly. We have been told that our American Recovery Act funding for Garrett County government only is $5,627,087. Although we have not received actual official notification of that funding yet, we also don't know what guidance will come with that. So the questions have been, what are you guys going to use that money for? How are you going to spend that money? I can't give a definitive answer on that yet, A, because we have not been officially awarded that money yet, and B, we don't know what criteria will be involved in what we can spend it on. However, I, I think I speak for everyone, correct me if I'm wrong, when we definitely will prioritize infrastructure, water, sewer, broadband, roads, et cetera, economic development. I mean, those are going to be our priorities. But what exactly we're going to do yet, and we can't specifically say, although we will get that information out as soon as we have it. The other thing, on top of that money, the towns also were allocated, all eight towns received an allocation to the American Recovery Act funding. So there'll be much more localized projects, I'm sure, through the, through the towns. And coming from town government, before I got here, I can tell you that there's some serious money for, for small towns that they'll have some access to, to be able to do some much-needed improvements there. So that, more to come on that, appreciate the question, and we'll certainly get that information out. There's a lot of money flowing out there right now from a lot of different areas. And I would like to say, we got some good news from the state budget as well. Some funding coming to Garrett County through that. Also, more to come on that, but want to thank the, the work of our delegation, Senator Edwards' delegate Biceau, they represent us well. And, and I think when, when all is said and done from this session, Garrett County is going to come out pretty well, I believe. And so a tip of the cap to, to those gentlemen as we move forward as well. So a lot of good things to come. Hopefully get some projects done that have lingered for a while and, and really make some improvements here. Any other announcements or, or comments from anybody? All right, hearing none. We'll go ahead and take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All right, meeting is adjourned, and Dr. Midcap, I'll turn it over to you.
I was going to say you earned your money as chairman today by all the reading and everything, so.
I've got us back on track.
Yeah, you did.
Right on.
I'd like to start, first of all, by thanking the commissioners and Mr. Noel, Mr. Weeks, for all that they do in support of the college. I know I've said this on several occasions, but coming here after almost 25 years on the shore, and this is my fifth year here, I'm, I'm still amazed and grateful every year at the kind of support that we receive from the county. That, that support is clear if, on the second slide that I've just handed out. As we outlined our request for '22, we kind of slotted it against RFY21 budget. And you can see the funding that we get from the county in general operating through the Garrett County Scholarship Program. The Performing Arts Center funding that is, will be in its second year in FY22. The local capital that we receive from the county, so I'm just, again, very appreciative for that. Our FY22 request is, just to summarize, is a 2.9% increase for general operating, flat funding on the Garrett County Commissioner Scholarship, Scholarship Program. An increase in the PAC funding is laid out in the memorandum of understanding between the college and the county. On the capital side, it's, it's a little misleading, because we're, 21 was the last year of the construction funding for the PAC, which was, you know, again, extraordinary commitment by our county to that. The, the funding in FY22 is kind of the runout on that. It was the $500,000 contingency funding for the PAC, up to $500,000 if necessary. The, the local capital, which I'll, I'll get into just a little bit later, something that we asked for on an annual basis, and as the county's been able to fund it, they have, which we appreciate. I did want to talk to you just a little bit about our, the way that we build our budget. It is a zero-based process. It, it's, it's a bottom-up approach. All of our cost center managers, who are the ones who are actually implementing budget at, at that departmental level, are the ones who provide us with their budget requests. There's several levels of review. There's a dean's level review that occurs with me prior to putting out the first draft budget. And we also require an explicit strategic plan tied to request additional funding. As, as the commissioners will recall, I briefed them last fall on our new strategic plan, a five-year plan, and we're requiring that, that any request for additional money be tied to that. As such, our key budget initiatives in FY22 that tie to that strategic plan includes an investment in a redesigned adventure sports program. We, we've done a couple of things with this. One, we've reduced costs through elimination of a lot of the administrative support in that area. The executive director and administrative associate had retired, and we eliminated those positions. We are adding back a second full-time faculty position in there, so that now we will have one faculty member who specializes in water sports and one who specializes in rock climbing, which are the two major strands for that. So to me, this is a, this is really what we want to do, reduce. There's also been a, a complete redesign of this curriculum. We've done two things to it. One, we've taken what used to be a rather complex collection of one-credit courses and combined them into three-credit courses that, that were easier to transfer to four-year institutions and also align more with Frostburg State University's program, which is one of our major feeder schools for this program. And this aligns directly with goal number one of our strategic plan of innovative and relevant curriculum. One of the other major things that we're doing that, that aligns with the, the same goal is in engineering. We, we're actually fortunate, we have probably more engineers per, per administration than I've ever seen. Everyone from our IR person to Kathy Mayer, who's our facilities person, a couple of faculty members. And one of the things that they had done, or they had recognized in doing a program review of engineering is that we really needed to broaden our curriculum. We have an electrical engineering curriculum, which is a fine curriculum, but it's, it's, it's very confining to someone who wants something broader. So we have developed an engineering transfer curriculum. Does not require us to add any full-time staff members. There's, there's a couple of courses, one of them being, I believe, Dynamics, that will have adjuncts coming in to teach. But what it will do is it will make it a lot easier for students who want a broader education in engineering to do their two years with us and then transfer in, in whatever engineering field they want to a four-year college or university. Also, goal, goal three of our strategic plan is really tied to a lot of our workforce development programs to try to bring innovative and market-driven programs to the area. Two of the ones that are, we are currently emphasizing are diesel mechanic, which will be running out of the CCTC in accident, and, and a machining program. We've already had really, really good initial requests from the community regarding these programs, and we really think these are going to be two extremely well-enrolled programs. The machining is particularly innovative. It's one of the, and I know, I think I talked with you about this last year with our paramedic program, but machining is one of those programs that we are now offering as a workforce training to credit option, so that if you start out in workforce training on the CE side, we will articulate those credits into a credit program for someone who wants to have the associate degree. And that, as I said, that deals with goal three. We are also completing, I think I've talked about this the last three years, our compensation study, a third-party enterprise did for us in 2018. We've been implementing it. We plan to complete implementation of our comp study in FY22, and that will allow us to fully fund positions that were found to be below market in this area, which, which again is one of our goals for increasing sustainability by managing the human resources of the college. You may notice the goal two is not recognized anywhere. That's because it's an enrollment management goal, and that supports the other three goals. So I've really been very pleased with the way our, our faculty and our staff and our department heads have really used the strategic plan that we've implemented, tied it to this budget that we've, that we're presenting today. The final piece of our budget is the local capital request, and it really has two pieces to it. One is a vehicle refresh. We, we started this in FY18, and the commissioners were able to, to fund it for two years, which we greatly appreciate. This is the one area we have not been able to make a lot of headroom, and we have a, a lot of very old vehicles in our fleet, the two 15-passenger vans or vans that are used for NRWT program and the adventure sports program, as well as intercollegiate athletics. We have, we, we've gone away from having as, as many vehicles in our fleet, because we, we work with Enterprise Rental, which has been a kind of provided more flexibility with us. And the timing was, was wonderful, as you know, you only pay for what you use, and we have not been doing a lot of traveling in the last year with COVID. But we would like to replace one vehicle, because we've taken three out of service over the last two years. And then we have one UTV that our maintenance staff has been using. It's been repaired multiple times, and we were just beyond the ability to repair it. At, at one way or another, we have to find a way to fund that. The second piece is Garrett Hall Stucco Restoration. Again, we, we've been very critically looking at any of the needs at Garrett Hall to make sure that we keep that residence hall as well as Laker. But this one in particular, the county-owned facility, up, up to date. A new roof was put on a couple of years ago. New systems were put, interior systems were put in, I think, three years ago. And then the Stucco Restoration is the most recent piece that, that we are hoping to be able to get funded this year. And again, I want to thank the commissioners. I appreciate all your support, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the budget.
Thank you. Questions?
There, there was a lot of discussion, debate in the legislature this year about funding of community colleges. Some of it was to provide more funding, some of it was to cut. The budget's pretty well settled. Do you, do you know how you made out in the budget process at the state level at this point?
We, waiting for final confirmation, but it looks like we made out pretty well.
So you're going to get additional funding?
Yes, we should, we should get another 2% to 3% from the state, depending on, on how it all plays out. But it, it is going to be an increase in funding.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else? Did you guys get, just curious? We talked, as, as you were here, we talked a little while ago about the American Recovery Act and all that stuff. And I know the school system's getting some money. Community colleges get, are you guys getting any money in that federal?
Yes, we are. In fact, the, the first segment of that, we got about $900,000. And the second segment, it looks like it's going to be about $600,000. The, the problem, there's been a good and a bad to it. The, the good to it has been, since we know that we can do anything, we, we can use that for anything that enhances remote learning. So we've been able to improve both our laptop, number of laptops, laptops that can be loaned out to students. And we've also been able to increase our IT infrastructure funding. So one of the things that's come out of this is that we're probably about four or five years ahead on our IT infrastructure renewal than we would have been without that. The, as you mentioned before, Commissioner, one of the complexities of it is how you can spend it. Our, our Dallas Wild, who's our CFO, and the business office from around the state have been meeting, and it, it's so restrictive in many ways that we're not sure we're going to be able to spend the money that we've been allocated. And, and all the other community colleges in the state are having the same issue. We've been trying to work with our auditor. We have a plan for how to spend it, but we don't want to do it without having sure, some kind of approval. Even our auditor has come back and said, this is so complex, and it's so changing that, you know, we, we can't give you definitive answers yet. So it's great to have the money, we're not sure how much of it we're going to be able to spend.
And, and how's enrollment?
Enrollment was down 12% this year in the COVID year. That's about where it ended up around the state. It's, as you know, we intentionally reduced our residence hall occupancy rate because of COVID. And most of our enrollment falloff was from students out of the area who did not have housing, who could have come here. And, you know, again, one of the things we appreciate is that when we came to you about that, you waived the Garrett Hall fee for this year, which made it possible for us to reduce this. Our expectation is that we'll be at 150 units in the fall out of 172. So one, having that, that rental hall income is going to be critical. But too many of the students who weren't able to come because we didn't have housing, we, we think we'll be able to.
Any other questions? All right, well, we appreciate you coming in, and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
All right, so that wraps everything up. Have a great day.